It is six PM. This is scheduled for six PM. Therefore, we shall begin. I'm probably about moderator of the hearing this evening. And the first thing I would like to do is put them to do those who are up here at the table. On my far left. Maybe now you'll be able to. First thing I'm going to do is introduce those here up at the table. And to my far left, board members Carl Hilton, Eddie Gilbert, Jeffrey Colburn, and Steve Thomas. And on my right is Stacy Dodd, our attorney, Keith Tally, and Matt King from the district. The purpose of our being here this evening is for a public hearing. It is the second public hearing on this subject. And if needed, after proper notice, we will have a third one. If not needed, we will not have a third one. I'm first going to read the preamble of rules for the public hearing. And to say that this public hearing held by the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board is called to order and is being held pursuant to KRS Chapter 77 and District Regulations. Notice of this hearing has been published pursuant to state law. Oral statements will be presented today. Statements should be concise. If you have a written version of your statement, please submit it to Ms. Hamilton after your presentation. All statements will become a part of the hearing record. There is one request for modification of STAR goals to be reviewed this evening. Pursuant to District Regulation 5.21, the district will determine whether to approve any modification of STAR goals. The board provides its public hearing in accordance with District Regulations, but does not vote on modification request. This is because the board may also need to serve as an appeal body for certain decisions made by the district. The district would like to note prior to receiving comments that this is not amending or modifying the STAR regulations in any way. The procedures for requesting a modification, that is the subject of this hearing, is provided for in the current STAR regulations. The board requests speakers approach the microphone here in front of the room and speak clearly into it as all comments will be recorded and transcribed in videotape. And I might mention that the videotape of the first public hearing on this subject is available on YouTube and it can be reached through the district's website from a link provided there. Many, the way, the order of things and the way we have to do things are written in the regulation. And the first thing that is required with the regulations is for me to ask, would the staff please present the request for modification of STAR goals by American Synthetic Rubber Company? Mr. King?
Thank you, Dr. Ball. The district has received requests for modification pursuant to Regulation 5.21, Section 5, from American Synthetic Rubber Company, or ASRC, to modify certain environmentally acceptable goals under Strategic Toxic Air Reduction Program, or STAR. It's this proposal that is the subject of today's hearing. The district is not proposing to amend the STAR regulations. The STAR program was adopted in 2005 in response to concerns about air toxics in Louisville, specifically West Louisville. Some of those in the room today were involved in the public process of developing and passing the STAR regulations. These regulations require large companies to characterize and quantify the toxic air contaminant emissions, estimate concentrations from these emissions in the air near their facilities, and compare them to environmental acceptability goals. For non-industrial property, places where people live and work, the goal is one in one billion from a single chemical from a single process, and seven point five in a million from all chemicals from all sources at a facility. For neighboring industrial property, the goals are adjusted by a factor of 10. The regulations have since their adoption provided for modification of these goals if a company uses best available technology for toxics, or TBAC, to achieve maximum reductions in and risk from toxic submissions for the goals they're seeking to modify. ASRC is seeking to modify the environmental acceptability goals on non-industrial property for emissions of 1-3 butadiene from two separate processes. It's flare and fugitive emissions from piping. ASRC's modification request does not modify the cumulative plant-wide environmental acceptability goal of seven point five in a million for residential areas. ASRC has also applied to modify the environmental goals on industrial properties for fugitive emissions of 1-3 butadiene, as well as cumulative plant-wide environmental acceptable goals of 75 in a million. The district received an amended modification yesterday from the company. It's available on the district's website. The best way to be updated is to sign up for our mailing list, which you can do out front, and to check our website. ASRC has proposed its flare thermal oxidizer as TBAC for emissions that had gone to the flare, which now serves as a backup control device. Proposed TBAC for fugitive emissions includes enhanced leak detection and repair, replacement of all rupture discs in 1-3 butadiene service, reduced thresholds for first attempt at repairs, and reduce leaks repair timeframes. If the district approves the modification, the regulations require that the company reevaluate TBAC every five years when it renews its operating permit. The regulations also provide that the district may require the company to implement revised TBAC at any time if it would achieve greater compliance with the original environmental acceptability goals. Additional details about ASRC's request for modification and proposed enforceable permit conditions are available on the district's website. The district has concluded a second public comment period and is holding the second public hearing on this request this evening. Public comments, whether submitted in writing or made as part of this public hearing, will become part of the record. A written response to the comments document will be made available at the time the district makes a final determination to approve or deny ASRC's request for modification. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. I apologize for not having sufficient chairs.
If you would like, we could get more chairs and put a couple more aisles down the side here. We can also put some out on the wall for folks to open up that door.
All right. We will say, we will say Prime Minister, you can get that back chair off.
Is seat right here, huh?
Do you want to come up front?
All right. I see, I see one more seat up front here is what I would like to take. Okay. Let's, let's now resume our public hearing. The next thing that I'm, that is required by regulation is that I ask if there is a representative of American Synthetic Rubber Company would like to make a call.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Guy Quatton, I have the pleasure of being the plant manager at American Synthetic Rubber Company. So, what I would like to accomplish today is to give you additional information compared to the information we gave you last time. And to start, because we realized that a lot of you have not had the opportunity to come inside the factory, I thought I would first show you some pictures of what it looks inside. So, let me start with that. So, you see here on this first picture, it might be a little bit difficult for you in the back to see that. What's that? Yeah, maybe you should turn on the lights. There you go. Is it better? So, what you see here, and, and folks, what I did is literally yesterday, I took my camera and I went out in the plant and took those pictures myself. I don't know what happened there. Sorry to take the pollution. Sorry for the interruption. So, yes, so yesterday I, I took my camera, went out in the factory and took some pictures because I realized during the last hearing that a lot of you have not had the opportunity to, to go inside the factory. So, here we're just showing a picture of where our operators are controlling the process inside the plant. I went around the plant where we store the butadiene and there were some maintenance personnel that were working back in the back of the factory. So, here you see Curtis, Jerry, and Chris, and myself. They were preparing to do the normal work that these gentlemen do at ASRC. Continued by tour around, then I met Erica and Lloyd. They were out in the plant and snapped a picture with them. You see, we have geese that have taken residence by our spheres. We have a lot of geese around the plant, actually. And what you see actually on the lower right-hand corner, right there, is we even have now baby geese that have set up residence by our, by our spheres. And you can see a close-up of, of those baby geese back in the factory. So, I just, just wanted to show you a few snapshots of what the inside of the plant, of the plant looks like. Okay, so that's a leading to, I want to summarize what we discussed last time. There was some key information we gave you. Some of you were not here last time, so I want to remind you of those key facts. The first one is ASRC, American Synthetic Rubber, has reduced its air emission by 90% since 2013, 90%. And we've consistently stayed under 90%. We're still under 90%, and our intention is to still be under 90%. We have no intention of increasing our emission, none. We're continuing to make progress, and as a matter of fact, in 2016, our total fugitive emission were down 47% compared to 2013, 47%. And we continue to demonstrate our commitment to reduce those emissions. As highlighted by the district, STAR program has some goals, very stringent goals. And if a company has difficulties meeting those goals, then it, the company has to demonstrate that it's using the best available technology. ASRC, American Synthetic Rubber, does not decide what best technology is. It has to be approved by the district. And we are using best available technology at American Synthetic Rubber. For the flare stack, we're using flare thermal oxidizers. And for the fugitive emission, all the series that were spelled out by the district are in place. We work hard every day to monitor those emissions. As we discussed last time, we spent $350,000 just to do the monitoring. We have technicians that are roaming the plant every day to make sure that we do not have emissions. And last time I announced that we were going to reevaluate our request for modification based on a good result that we had in 2016. And I'm going to show you that we did just that in the next following slide. So, remember, the STAR program has several goals. So, we're going to move over that table again. So, what you see on the left side and on the first column at the top is first, there is a goal for all the chemicals that are coming out of, of the plant. And what you see here is that the goals set by the STAR program are 75 and 7.5. And ASRC today is announcing that we are fully in compliance. We're not asking for modification on those goals. We're not asking. As a matter of fact, we were going to ask a modification for 2013, 2014, and today we're announcing that we're not. Now, then there is the single chemical, and then there's the two sources. Either it comes from a stack or it comes from fugitive emission. And the number of concern that the public has raised is the one that concerns the butadiene fugitive emission. And the goal is one. We had first proposed 4.12, and today we're proposing 3.04. I want to talk about what that means because it was very evident last time when we discussed that it was not really clear what that meant. So, I would like to, for you guys to pay very attention to the next slide. So, what you see here is a map of the city of Louisville, mostly the west end of the city of Louisville. So, you'll recognize Chani, Chickasaw, Parkland, Portland, California, Park Duval, Hallmark, Shiloh. Okay, look at the map. What you see on the lower left-hand corner is our plant boundary. This little white represents the plant boundaries of ASRC. Okay, that's what that is. What the blue patch that, that you see is represent the boundaries upon which ASRC meets all the goals. And what you see is the reason for why we're asking a modification is because ASRC, on non-industrial, only meets the goal of one in a million slightly outside of the boundaries of the plant, slightly outside. Now, it is not ASRC that gives this model. This model is done by a third-party contractor using fully approved EPA methods, reviewed and approved by the district. So, they take the emissions of American Synthetic Rubber, they plug them into a model, and the model spits out a result, which is what you see on that board. This is the regulation. ASRC did not come up with that. The regulation is that... Is it working? So, right at the boundary here is where we meet the goal of one in a million. The reason why it's so important for you guys to understand is because if you live in Chani, if you live in Chickasaw, if you live in Park Duval, you are not impacted by those emissions. You're not. It's science.
We drive, we don't understand.
My guy asked me, is Eric going, right?
Let me, let me, let me clarify something. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that you guys do not smell something. I'm not saying that. I'm not, I'm just saying it's not, you do not. That's all I'm saying. So, in our proposed request for modification, this is, this information is fully available in the request for modification. And you can actually see the map that we're showing here that shows the reason for why, for why the company has to make that request for modification. That's the reason.
I thought you said you were not asking for modification.
Oh, yeah, we're asking for modification because we cannot meet this particular goal at the bottom. The goal is one. We cannot meet the goal, and we're asking for modification at 3.04. The purpose of this graph is to, is to show you...
Why can't you meet the goal?
I'm going to have to ask you to, what? The company can make its presentation, and then after that, there will be ample opportunity for everyone to be heard. But please, let's keep order and let the company make its presentation. And make it as concise as you can.
So, in conclusion, I want to just reemphasize that while, when ASRC follows all the STAR program regulation, this is what comes out. And the reason why ASRC makes that request is because we cannot contain it just within our plant's line, and it comes out slightly, again, most of the area is in the west end, not impacted by our request for modification. So, in conclusion, I just want to, to say that we strive for solid and cooperative relationship. We're a proud member of Roberta County Advisory Council. If, if you want to know more, please come to the Roberta County Advisory Council. We meet every month. We meet every month. I am there every month. I see people that belong to our CAC that can vouch for that. And we request the district that the district recognize our diligence and hard work to control our emission by accepting the request.
Now, deviate slightly from our usual to say that I'm a moderator. And we must follow regulations to... Let me follow regulations. However, we have some leeway. And my goal was to have everyone who wishes to be heard, to be heard. Now, I need to tell you that we're going to turn the air conditioning off at nine o'clock. It's pre-programmed to do that. So what I would like to know is from you, and I don't... First of all, how many of you wish to speak this evening? I see seven, eight hands. Ten, okay, ten. All right. I think that with ten speakers, we will not put a limit on the length of time that you speak. We have asked that you have to be concise, so limit yourself perhaps a bit, but we're not going to run a timer. You may ask, you may certainly in your presentation, ask questions. You should not expect a give and take sort of discussion. You may ask the questions and when the public's part of the discussion is concluded, then we will give him another chance to talk. If he wishes to answer the questions, then he may. But we're not going to get involved in a back and forth during this part of the press of the public hearing. Right, when you present, you may ask the questions and then when he replies, he can answer them.
So he gets the first voice, get the last voice in this meeting? Because I don't think that's fair. I think people should be able to ask some questions, like maybe three questions.
You know what?
And then, hold on, and then he can answer them for us. And then we can respond to that because we are in the dark symbol and that's a power play. Okay, so he cannot speak first and last. That's what their strategy is right now. They actually whisper and say, "Make sure you talk last" so they don't have to fight over.
I will be saying, does anyone else wish to make a statement at the end? And that gives you opportunities to report. So you can have the last word if you want. Now, the next thing that I'm supposed to ask is, does anyone from the public wish to make a statement? I know you do. So I'm going to...
Good evening, my name is Rachel Hamilton. I'm the Assistant Director. Sorry to interrupt that. I'm Rachel Hamilton, I'm the Assistant Director and also the Secretary and Treasurer of the Board. If you have a written statement and you would kindly share a copy with me after you give your comments to the Board, that'd be very helpful for me. Also, for the sake of the person who transcribes this event, please speak into the microphone. It makes it much easier. Reverend Snarson?
Counselor McCollum has asked to speak. Good. Good evening. I will be... My name is Davis Snarson, Pastor at Joshua Tappan, I'm from Missionary Baptist Church in the Russell Neighborhood, but I live in Chickasaw Neighborhood where I grew up. I'm concerned about American Synthetic Rubber Company petitioning this Board to reduce butydyne emissions because I live in an area of global that will be immediately and acutely affected by the relaxing of these regulations. I also pass to people who live in the area that would also be immediately and acutely affected as well. But even if I didn't live in Chickasaw or if I didn't pass to the people that live in the surrounding area that would be immediately and acutely affected, I would still be concerned because we know that we have children that come into our communities for school and they have to leave and go back to wherever they go to. We know that you can carry particles on your clothes back to wherever you live. Now we know that there's also geese and birds on premises that fly and curious stuff as well. Therefore, what American Synthetic proposes is a bad idea for all of us. Policies and rules are there to help govern our lives and give us order. They are to enhance life, not depreciate it. Policies speak to the values we share in community. So this is not just a conversation about economics and which acceptable evils we allow in our neighborhoods, but these policies speak to our humanity and how we see and treat all of God's creation. Our policy should facilitate neighborliness and communal well-being. But the request from American Synthetic Rubber Company to relax the rules governing the emissions of butydyne do just the opposite. And yet they're requesting to relax the very rules that provide a safer environment and better quality of life that reduce chemicals emissions of butydyne from their plant, which butydyne has been linked to cancer, cardiovascular diseases, respiratory illnesses, reproductive and neurological issues. And for what? For the benefit of the community? Or even increase safety for their own employees? No. But because as they confess, they keep missing the mark. They fall short. So instead of maintaining a standard that keeps us safe and them safe, they ask for something anti-productive for the sake of reducing the fees they must pay at the expense of the lives they believe are acceptable to expose to deadly chemicals. This is basically doubling down on evil when you miss the mark and then ask that the goalposts be moved so that you can hit the mark. But we're not talking about gains, we're talking about people's lives. American Synthetic Rubber Company believes that values for profit should outweigh our communal values for people's lives. Question is, who will you value?
Thank you very much. I had to request to speak early because I have another engagement. I apologize, I had to request to speak early because I had another engagement. My name is Brandon Curran and I'm a Louisville Metro Council member representing District Eight, which is the greater Highlands area. I'm here today as are other residents of District Eight I see in attendance because we stand with the people of Rubber Town, West Louisville and the whole city. In fighting for clean, healthy air for everyone. We all breathe the same air and we all live and thrive where we don't to get our asl and community. Air quality is so vital and environmental health issue because it poses a direct and significant threat to public health and also in turn our city's economic health. One in less than eight people suffer from asthma, which means that Louisville is on the verge of being unfit for living for more than 13.5% of the adult population, including CEOs, entrepreneurs, families with children who are disproportionately vulnerable to attacks and so on. We simply can't afford to have 13.5% of the adult US population will disqualify from living in our city. Louisville has made great strides in improving air quality. In improving air quality through the Strategic Toxic Air Reduction Program, decommissioning our coal-fired power plant and in other ways, but we have many challenges remaining. Sprawl and auto-dominated transit system, energy-efficient buildings and the vanishing tree can be among them. In March of this year, my colleague Counselwoman Jessica Green and I partnered to plant 44 trees in my District Eight and 44 trees in District One at Farnesley Middle School, just a four-minute drive from American Synthetic Rubber, to symbolize our unity in advancing the whole community's public and environmental health goals. Although my presence here is more than just symbolic, I'm specifically asking the Air Pollution Control Board to deny AMRC's waiver application. We require the company to capture the last remaining fugitive emissions. It's secondary to the real work Counselwoman Green and I started together this past winter, which will continue until we achieve clean, healthy air and environmental justice for all citizens.
Would you say it?
Carl Sidgery?
Well, I've lived in the west end all my life. And in 1968, I was employed by a company called Celadie Corporation through a chemical company located in the Estes Hill. We stayed there, I stayed there for 30 years. And we were basically closed down. And the reason that the company closed down, because they did not want, they could not and they wouldn't be able to continue to keep up this part of having the pollution and all the chemicals that were being put into the air. So they decided to close, they moved to an area that is very isolated and in Florida. I got a couple of things I just want to put on here. First of all, number one, he was talking about butydyne and the quill of nitro. Those are two elements that, number one, their chance to cause it. Anytime you handle this material, you have to have protected clothing on, you have to have protected suits, you have to have masks. And once you handle this material, the suit has to be washed off with water, then you take it off, then you take a shower. And for him to say, "I'll tell y'all that this stuff don't hurt y'all," he lying to you. Butydyne, quill of nitro, phenol, all of these stuff. Phenol is a chemical that if you put, and it's 100% spread, if you put it on your skin within five minutes, it will attack your nervous system and you will be dead within 30 minutes. This is the type of material that he's talking about, they want to increase in our air. 10, 12 years ago, we weren't able to establish some guidelines as far as the smell and the pollution that they were putting in there. If you notice now, it's gotten stronger. And the reason, one of the reasons it's gotten stronger is because we lost our monitoring. The city no longer wanted the funds of monitoring that these people had in their backyard that they could tell when this stuff was being overused. And it's being overused now. Like I said, I got 30 years, I can smell butydyne and quill of nitro at 34th and Broadway and now Long Island. Not only that, I know the potential of what the danger is. Butydyne and quill of nitro, if it reaches a certain heat element, it will turn to a gas. And this gas will travel, it can travel for miles. And once it reaches a point where it is ignited, it will follow a track all the way back to the original source. So you're not just talking about, you're not only talking about the health issue, you're talking about the danger of an explosion. This stuff is nothing to play with. I guess it was maybe 15 years, 12, 15 years ago, they had a spill down there and it was laying right in the ditch. And all it took was a spark to get it going. And one thing you have to understand about chemical fire, you don't put chemical fires out of the fire. Chemical fire, burnout. They don't, they don't just pour water on it like you do with it. And once this fire burns, it can burn for months. And for them wanting to increase, the only reason they want to increase it is because they probably got contracted they can't feel under the circumstances they're under now. So they won't be able to make more powerful chemicals, more powerful production so that they can do that. Now, my question, one of my questions to you would be, we don't have the monitors anymore. Would you be willing, would your company be willing to fund the monitors to be put in the neighborhood?
I'm asking the plant manager the question. With your topic, if you say that if we're here to hear what you have to say...
I'd like to move, Secretary of the Board, not take any question that a person asks. So at the end of the meeting, that we can review the questions and agree on three or four that who asked this company to answer. So that's my motion, that the Secretary of the Board not take questions.
You cannot make a motion.
Well, I'm making the motion as a public, and that's, it's a public vote. So if you agree with me, who wants these questions written down?
If we can't have that orderly public area here, then we won't be able to have them. So I'm going to ask it to be ordered. Now, the questions, the order of ages, you ask the question and he will have an opportunity to respond to you.
Okay, that's fine, okay. The other part of that also is me working in that plant. Like I said, I can smell it, taste it and know what it is. And I see it slowly, just like on 264 around Bells Lane and in that area. I smell it now coming back strong. So that means that their production, it has to be that if you smell it, it's that strong now, that means they're already putting it in the air. But unfortunately, we have no way to monitor it. We don't have a way because they took away the monitors that we had. And the bottom line is, we're tired of a few people wanting to take the west end and make money off of. One of the things that's going to happen too, that we got this to see, if y'all allow them to exceed what is already just set as a standard, they're going to wait till about in the summer months, they're going to wait till about 10 or 11 o'clock and they're going to make their worst product, they're going to dump it into the air from 10 to 6 o'clock in the morning. And you come out and you look at your car and you can write your name on it, you can smell it. And we don't need that. Celadie decided to move rather than go through all of the competition they were dealing with. And then I asked a question, they have maybe 150 people down there. There's 150 people worth keeping in mind to 30,000 people that have to smell this stuff, have to breathe it. It's just not ethical. And we need to realize that the west end is a community just like every, just about a sitting on this business. I think it was 2004, Ford, the people at Ford Motor Company were accosted by eight people about the smell of the paint that was coming, the paint smell that was coming from Ford Motor Company on Chainwood Lane. They owe $5 million. My thing down to monitor, there were no meetings, there was nothing. They just went out and did it. And you know why they did it? Because all of them lived in that neighborhood, so they wanted their neighborhood to stay clear. We want ours to stay clear.
Good evening.
Good day.
Clean air is a basic human right. It's not something that anyone should ever have to make a case for, or to beg for, especially in the greatest country on earth. But yet, here we find ourselves. And so we stand, neighbors and allies, urging you to deny this request for modification. I want to recognize all friends and allies who are here, as well as my council colleagues, Councilwoman Mary Woodridge was here, Councilwoman Brandon Cohn, Councilwoman Barbara Sexton Smith, as well as Representative Madison Scott. You, you all, we, as elected officials, those who took an oath to represent thousands of people, take this very, very seriously. In two thousand and four, the top goal of the STAR program was stated as, protecting the health and safety of people who live in the community must be our top priority. But what exactly has changed over a decade later? This city has spent months lobbying and talking about the issue of E-SIG and HUCA, because it would be bad for business for the city. And yet today, we stand alone without the Health Department. Yet today, we stand alone without the administration. Yet, we are still standing. To the company, the progress you have made is good. It is a requirement, it is a cost of business of doing business in this city, so you are to be committed, but you are doing it because you want to make a dollar. Let us not forget that. This is a horrible, horrible precedent, and it would be a terrible move by this body to allow this waiver. What does it say about the value of the lives of black people, and brown people, and poor people, and those who live in the disenfranchised urban core, that we are even being forced to have this discussion? People in the West End have been repeatedly given the short end of the statement. And while the pictures look like a country club or a golf club, let us never forget, this is a chemical plant. A chemical plant that almost thirty thousand people in District One, and in other parts of West Louisville, my family, my children, my loved ones, we are forced to breathe this toxic air every day. And so I would hope, the wild discussion has tried to minimize the effects of allowing this waiver. Let us never forget, we are human beings, our lives matter, and we hope that you will never forget that, and not leave us out, y'all. Thank you.
Let's move on. Next speaker.
I ask that you bear with me, seeing me simply because I have an eye problem, so I'm going to kind of read you the very story, if you don't mind. First of all, Reverend, you took most of what I had written here, and I am not going to go over what you said. I had exposures due to cancer and everything in this paper, and there's no need of reading that again. So, I'm going to go to the last three paragraphs of this paper. First of all, let me say I admire everybody in this room, because this is what it takes to get attention, this is what I expect to bring, uh, change. It's a shame that we have to be upset to do this, but this is a change. First of all, just a little bit about me, I lived in the West End for forty years, I know I'm dating myself, and I know I just look like I'm forty-five, but I lived in the West End for forty years. We lived apart at Thirty Sixth and Grand, one block down from the Muhammad House, was where I grew up. So my heart is in the West End, my family is in the West End, my brother still lives in the West End, all my cousins live in the West End. So, I am there in the West End either every day, almost a week, because our cousins, we love to get together and have fun. I won't say try, but we love to get together and have fun. But with that, I want to say here, that it's a reminder, that a request for modification to increase one is three butydyne, to any level outside of the specifications listed in the STAR program, is truly a direct threat to lives and quality of life to those who live in close proximity to the facility and Jefferson County at large. Due to the cries of the public, ASRC has stated, they will withdraw and resubmit new modification requests, and the West Jefferson County Task Force will look forward to that. The ASRC manager states, the company has made substantial investments to upgrade equipment and to cut emissions, but cannot meet the STAR standards. Rather than find ways to curb them, perhaps there are ways other than increasing them that we haven't explored. Even though we recognize the amount of investment in the company to upgrade and monitor, we recognize the challenge this presents. But I ask that we also keep in mind the increased exposure that would overburden the community. We can put the value of equipment changes in dollars and cents, but can we place a value on the health, and the quality, and the, I guess that's my cue, oh. But can we place a value on the health and quality of life to those that are exposed? I need to ask the Board one question. In the event that everything is met in the STAR program, according to the best available technology, the cost of burdenness, if all of those things are met, but yet the standard is still not met, where do we go? Where do we go from there? And I think that that is, that is a, a question that remains, and it will remain with us. And with that, I should say that we must have further dialogue, I think the community should be much more involved, much more involved. And it should be involved prior to anything happening, rather than after something happened. So, with that, thank you very much.
All right, so excuse me if I'm all over the place, because I wasn't going to speak tonight, until I heard the company speak. So, I want to preface my statement with this. One of the tricks that the cities, cities, the mayors, the agencies use, is to characterize residents as people who just don't understand. We don't get the science, we don't get this, and we don't get that. I want to let you all know, that we may not be chemical engineers, uh, or mechanical engineers, but we have high expertise in our experiences with how these chemical plants have assaulted our bodies with chemicals. So, with that said, I want to say, during this hearing, you're going to hear people mispronounce chemicals, you are going to hear people maybe speak outside of what the actual issue of today is, um, you're going to hear people, um, saying things that may be slightly need to be qualified, but that in no way should make you disregard the fact that these people, all of us, are concerned about the health and safety of our communities. And that even though we're here for a specific issue, uh, there are, this specific issue is affected by the total, um, combination of issues that we face daily, from the numerous chemical plants that are in Rubber Town. So, um, American Synthetic Rubber, uh, you guys were not on the Board back in two thousand three, two thousand four. I was at many, many meetings. American Synthetic Rubber Company was the company that said, okay, there were, there was a, um, large amount of butydyne.